A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call?
Mr. Olt.
Here.
Mr. Beistel. Mr. Vance.
Here.
Mrs. Love. Mr. Miller. Mr. Pelikowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley. Mr. Calero.
Here.
Let the record show that Mrs. Love notified me she couldn't make it this evening. I guess she forgot that the highest chair of the board is being such much called Captain Lee.
Let the record also show that Mrs. Shipley had a family medical situation and will try to be here if she can.
Citizens comments, we don't appear to have any, or any citizens for that matter. We will now commence with discussing this fine budget that we have in front of us. A draft, I may add. You also got a binder, each of you tonight. Mr. Marnell and Mrs. Dye spent a great deal of time and effort putting this together. Obviously, there's a lot of material in it and I don't actually expect each and every board member to go through and line item by line item everything in there, but it will give you at least some information about items that you might have questions about. Certainly, this is not the last meeting that we'll have concerning the budget and I would expect that if, as we go along, if there are questions come up, Mr. Marnell will be able to answer those questions, certainly hopefully to your satisfaction. I think the important thing is that we look at this budget as a draft. I am, not that it's a concern, but certainly even as a draft budget, when we look at the items in here, the thing that glares out at you obviously is the surplus deficit to assigned as a fund balance of almost $2 million. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do and Jim will tell you that there's a lot more work to be done. Part of what is in the budget so far as wages and salaries go, Jim has taken into account the potential for eight retirements, incentive retirements, okay? But only in the form of salaries. He's not done the computations yet for what that would mean as far as savings go for social security, Medicare, the retirement fund, and health insurance. So obviously, that will net us some additional savings. Also, in this draft, we do not have the expense for the incentives. It is not included in this particular draft. But again, as I said, we have a lot of work to do. What I'd like tonight and in any succeeding meetings that we have is to look at these items and, as you have questions, rather than simply take this budget and simply say, "This is the budget we were given. We'll just have to either cut or accept it the way it is," I would like each of us to look at this budget and, as I said, pick out items in here that you may have specific questions on. One of them that should come to mind right away are these proposed new projects and equipment budget that you'll see at the bottom of your draft. And again, these are just proposals. Jim has used a very successful method of asking each of the departments to come up with what they expect they will need in the coming fiscal year. Jim did not send out to each of them a set fiscal amount that they would be allowed to spend. He wanted to know what they needed and what they would expect, they would expect to get from us as a board. That doesn't mean they're going to get it. And as I said again, in coming meetings tonight, we don't have anybody here. I believe Mr. Pushkar didn't realize that we might want to have him speak, but again, he will be here. We will have all of the individuals that may have a significant amount of monies in this budget give us some explanation as to what they want to do with that money and why they need it and if there are ways to actually take that money that is needed and maybe spread it out over a number of years. We don't necessarily have to use all of these figures this year. We can certainly spread it out and take some of the funds and use them over the next two or three years depending on what items they are. And certainly, we are some that we will have to address immediately. Jim, any comments at all that you'd like to make about this fine piece of work that you guys put together?
Well, we wanted to put together an actual budget book, a document, okay? It's a format that I've used in the past and I know that you folks have used in the past. In fact, the table of contents up front after you pull out your stapled section, it's an example that Sue was familiar with from the past when they would put together budget books. I saw one of the old budget books. They were in legal format version, but, so since she had tabs and numbered tabs in stock, we decided to use them. In the future, I'll go to a different binding and tab method, but this certainly serves our purpose. So you have revenue details in the first couple of tabs, one, two, and three, and then you jump to the expenditure tabs which start at number five. And you can read those from the table of contents and then flip to the tab. Let me reiterate what you said, Bob, is that this is a work in progress draft. This is not obviously the proposed budget. We have to have a proposed budget adopted by the end of May, so this is just a work in progress. Sections are going to change. In fact, I changed a section tonight before I came to the meeting, so after you're done taking these home and perusing them, if you would care to return them, I'd be glad to reproduce sections that have changed and insert them for you and then produce a new summary page as the totals change. Of course, there are lots of things to be decided yet. Obviously, before we pass a final budget, do you want to increase taxes using Act 1? There's no tax increase in this working draft. Obviously, I held the state subsidies where they're at currently. Again, we all know there's major discussions going on in the legislature with the governor on what's going to happen with the subsidies. Bob touched on, on the summary page, I pulled out and put down at the lower right the listing of proposed technology replacement and facility improvement projects. The technology tab is tab 18, just to let you know that, and the facility improvements are back under tab 23. So those are items certainly to be thought about and considered. Also under tab 23, there's a list of nine items that I threw in there just for the thought process. The totals are not in there because I just did a swag at the estimates without having quotes in hand, but there are issues out there in addition to the ones that are listed here with dollar amounts. There's paving concerns still out there. The Ruffsdale Building, the entrance and circle needs consideration. At the SPC Building, there's, again, there's the entrance to it and the circle. At the senior high school, there is paving work that needs to be done at the exit point. The track, we've talked about it. Again, we need to get a quote. If it's something we want to do this summer or a future summer, the track needs refinished and repainted. The SPC Building needs a new set of lower doors and it needs more window air units. Up at the track, there's that bathrooms, like a garage thing there. Those bathrooms are in pretty sad shape, at least from my standpoint of visiting up there, so that's something that we may want to consider redoing the bathrooms at some point. The fieldhouse needs an alarm and fire system, fire alarm and a burglar alarm system. And for this complex, SES and SMS, we'd like to upgrade the key fob system to the new system that SPC and the high school got. Again, I just used wild estimates there. I don't know how accurate they are, but they're not included in these totals. The ones that are, obviously, the new high school entrance project. We've been talking about the gym floor project. The middle school needs three new interior security gates and the Ruffsdale Building does need some new bathroom partitions in the boys' and girls' bathroom. And then there's a thing called a Patterson pump that needs to be, to replace the old pump in the boiler at this building. And of course, Lee can talk about what that means.
Can I ask you a question? While you're on building, the, yeah, building on top of here up here, the primary center, we've been leaving that go, leaving that go for years. It needs windows, electric, needs a lot of day air conditioning done, and there's anything in, can we get a grant or anything like that to work with this to make it work? Because these kids have been putting up with this plus teacher comedy here. And I just wonder if there's anything in the progress for this or anything that can be done to help this project go along?
Butch, we got estimates, I'm going to say maybe four years ago, to do air conditioning in that building and included in the air conditioning had to be an electrical upgrade because there's not enough power in that building to support a full-blown HVAC system. And the number at that time was 500,000, and with enhancement to add some humidity to the air of 650,000, as I recall. My worry about that building, we just go ahead and spend that money and air condition, that's fine, it's air conditioned, then we have an updated air conditioner system, but the building was renovated in 1982. I'm not sure, but I believe the boiler was replaced then, so we have a boiler that's going on 35 years old. As you mentioned, the windows, the lighting. I know at the VOTAC, when they had a similar project that went into one of the Gees or the ESCO projects, where they had a number of contractors come in and say, "We can do this for whatever the amount of money would be." The district floated a bond for that amount, but there was a guaranteed energy savings, so part of the bond issue was paid through dollars that were saved. And if that energy savings wasn't realized, then the contractor was on the hook for that portion of the bond payment. So that might be something to look into. I actually brought that up, I think my first or second meeting as superintendent, and it just didn't grow legs at that meeting and when we talked about the air conditioning, it didn't grow legs at that meeting.
I mean, I think it's something we should look into or see if we can't get something to help upgrade the building.
Well, the gentleman from Johnson Controls that's working with the Central West Orleans CTC would like to meet with us if you would be interested in doing a similar guaranteed energy savings project like they have done at the VOTAC, so.
Well, we can look into something like that there.
It costs nothing to look.
Right. I mean, I think we're going to have to plan on this sooner or later. I know it's a bad time because everything's coming at one time again, but the more we put it off, the worse things are going to be. That's just a suggestion.
That's a good segue because one of the things Jim and I've talked about, and again, it just makes good sense, is that we have a fund balance that doesn't really reflect what we need it to reflect. We need to have items in that fund balance that are specifically geared towards these types of activities so that when we're putting money in that fund balance, it's not just general fund balance, it's specific. Jim and I talked a little bit about.
I just, you know, we've been talking about it, talking about it, and I've been here for, what, four years. The longer it goes on, the worse it's going to be to upgrade or whatever we can do, but if we can get into a program like that there, I think that'd be a good thing to venture into to see what it takes to outtake. That's my opinion. I only got one of them.
And also, at the Ruffsdale Building might have similar needs like the primary center. If you're going to continue to keep that building and lease it out, we've heard comments from them about the old carpeting and, of course, bathroom partitions are in really bad shape and until you really go over there and study that facility, what would it need also?
Would they be able to come in and do that same thing with that building?
For sure. I would use, I would use a company like Johnson Controls. It doesn't have to be them, but you can start with them and have them look at those two old buildings plus look at other areas in the district. Try to do as much under that umbrella of the guaranteed energy savings program.
In many cases, the energy savings pays for the bond issue. Obviously, if we're adding air conditioning, it won't, and we see we're using a little bit more in terms of the energy there. It's worth a look, absolutely.
Does that require a vote from the board or can we just have Jim do that?
You're not spending money.
All right. Well, I think we ought to have Jim look into that, Jim, if you are able to do that. Obviously, right now, you're in the throes of.
Well, I think a good format for that would be to have a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting and have that gentleman come in and discuss it with us, what can be done, and then he can do the walkthrough of those buildings, maybe do that before coming to the Buildings and Grounds Committee and give a report. Again, it doesn't cost them anything to do that.
Honeywell that does that as well?
Honeywell does it too. Siemens does it. Oh, there's several excellent companies out there. In fact, you know, one approach is, you know, you could always do an RFP and have them compete to do the work. It involves work on our part because you're putting together multiple RFPs and then you have to pull them all together and analyze them all. And of course, their job is to present themselves in the best possible light and then we have to dissect them, see which one to go with. You've got a working company right now and I think, you know, you start with them and see where it goes.
I think Mount Pleasant, guaranteed, and the Gees and projects.
They did.
Last year or the year before.
They did.
Agreed that they use. Was it Johnson?
I want to say Honeywell.
I don't know if the VOTAC, we had a department, but did things to say about Johnson Controls. Should I go with the gentleman?
No, it does not.
Joe's talking about is Johnson, sir. Is it ever the, give somebody their cell phone number, email address, any question?
Governor's proposed. I'm sure the legislature will.
They seem very happy with the way it's going.
I think they, did they use a consultant when they were getting all the hard pieces together?
I'm not sure who they had before Johnson Controls. They had another company. I remember the bid was approved, getting a couple million dollars higher. Right, but then whenever they were, they were going to choose, they had somebody to help them sort through all that and they finally chose Johnson. I think they did.
Yeah, a guaranteed energy savings project, I think, is the better way to go as opposed to the old standard PlanCon renovation project. That's where every 20 years, you know, a building qualifies for a renovation, additions or renovations, and you seek out a state subsidy to help you finance that work. Unfortunately, the governor has proposed a moratorium on new PlanCon projects effective July 1st. So unless you get a project in the door by June 30th, who knows when they'll lift the moratorium on PlanCon projects? I just throw that out there just from reading all the stuff that the governor has proposed. Why he wants to put another moratorium on PlanCon, I don't know. It's probably just a, you know, a way to keep one section of their budget under control without needing to come up with new money for new projects.
Jason, you think the Buildings and Grounds could possibly get together with Jim and just at least get somebody in, get us a newer estimate? Obviously, the other one was four years ago. I don't know. Just to get at least, get a ballpark figure, see where we start, and if we want to bring more people in, that's fine, but at least get an updated figure of what it would cost and what we'd save.
And that estimate was only for air and electric. It had nothing to do with the boiler system or the lighting or anything.
Right, right. And I'm sure they're going to, they're going to want to deal with the window issue when they're dealing with the energy savings. They're going to tell us that they certainly aren't going to guarantee any energy saving if we've got windows that are just blowing air.
Right. Probably the roof. Probably the roof. That roof was just done maybe five years ago, Tim?
Is that a caulking roof that's on it?
Yes.
It's good.
Yeah, that roof was done, the first year it was a primary center, I believe, so that hasn't been all that long, about five, six years. We did that one in Ruffsdale, one, one year.
That would've been a good time to do a guaranteed energy savings project.
Oh, 708.
Do you just want to get the guy from Johnson Controls or do you have?
I would say just start with Johnson Controls. Why not just, you know, make it easy, start with just them and see what we have, and that way we'll get an idea.
Is the Joint Operating Committee board satisfied with what Johnson Controls has done? Successful job?
Yeah. Did you hear you're satisfied with?
If you just email me some contact information on that, I'll go over there. Thank you.
I'll change the subject, but the middle school material gates, what is that? Is that being discussed?
Lee is, is working on those and he, there were some issues with using permanent gates. There were some fire code kinds of issues that he was trying to work through.
So where, where are we talking about? What's being discussed for those?
I'm not sure we had exact placements yet. We were just talking about it conceptually and what we could and couldn't do.
I think, Jack, the issue is that those old gates that we're used to seeing are not allowed to be used anymore.
Right.
So you have to get a specialized gate. And so essentially, Mr. Vance, anytime you have activities and you know how much the school gets used, the gates would be to block off and secure access down towards the academic wing and also I think they'd be down the stairs, so you could probably walk down the stairs, but you couldn't go anywhere once you got down there.
I think that's a great idea. I've thought that for years, being in here at different events and stuff, that's what I was hoping to have to over.
Oh, yeah, you've talked about it often over the years and.
When I saw the dollar amount, I was hoping it was that and not something that I didn't know was being discussed otherwise.
I'll try to get an update from Leo on that. I've been talking to him for quite some time about this and that.
I have one more thing for them, since we're going Buildings and Grounds. I think Bob brought this up last year, when we were building on the paving project, and he said something a little earlier about putting a maintenance line item for sealing pavement. I don't know if that's in there this year or not. I was up at the middle school and that parking lot was looking pretty bad also. And that's not in there. Pretty sure it wasn't sealed.
Again, yes, the problem, Jason, again, we only do it when it gets to the point where it's so bad that we have to have the whole thing redone as opposed to maintaining it and not having to start from scratch. We've talked a lot about spending a lot of money here and, of course, we could spend till the cows come home, but we can't spend what we don't have. Obviously, we're limited in what our tax increases can be and we're limited in certainly what the governor will eventually get approved for funding for us, but again, talking with Jim and some other issues that have come up, we had seen where some of the school districts are now actually taking an offensive position as opposed to a defensive position on taxes. Properties that are sold and are increased in value, we're usually on the end of someone trying to get us to lower the tax on a property and we're having to defend it, but when a property's value increases, we are generally not doing anything to increase that tax liability for that property. And some of the school districts are doing that now. It appears that it's a long-term process. It's not something that you would net any gain from immediately, but certainly if you don't start the process, you will never gain anything from it. And I think maybe as a board, we need to start considering that as something we need to do, start looking. And we have, I said, we have some recent sale of properties that certainly might fall into a category that we would want to challenge the current assessment and proceed with that. And I think if I read that correctly, Jim, they had done that on the basis of a contingency. I think that's what I read in the article, that they, they had taken it to a firm to actually do, and then they guaranteed them a percentage of whatever was won. I mean, it's the old Edgar Snyder. We don't win, you don't pay.
I think that was what Greensburg Salem.
Mm-hmm.
I think the Norman Board is.
Yes.
Greensburg Salem expects to get $400,000.
Right, but you've got to start the process and if you don't start it, again, you're, I mean, I think they said it was, I think, a three or four year down the road. It was a considerable amount of time, but again, that not only gave them that back tax, but it also gave them an ongoing tax base that they didn't expect to have. So, you know, again, we need to start looking at some of these things and maybe taking the offensive on these and going out there. Any other questions? I guess, again, you have a whole booklet here and you didn't have it when you walked into the meeting. All you had was a basic draft summary sheet. What's in there, again, we need to go through line by line, and I'm not saying each individual, one of us will do that. I'm not saying we'll do that as a meeting, but I think we need to look at that as board members, whatever it is that you might feel specifically, you have an interest in. Look it over. Don't simply accept. I mean, if it has to do with Buildings and Grounds, if it has to do with athletics, we have everything in here. We have the salaries, we have the cost for every single item in here. It's not final, but we have them and we need to look at those items and we need to give Jim direction. It's not going to come from Jim to us, and I've already talked about this at length, and Jim is not writing a budget for us that we're going to rubber stamp and say, "Jim wrote it up, good budget, we're done." If we have a budget, it's ours. It's not Jim's, it's not Jack's, it's going to belong to the board. And so whatever the final numbers are, we bear the responsibility. We need to look them over and be sure what's in there is something that we can live with. All right? I don't have anything else? Any other questions?
I have one. Jim, this block to the right that you're working drafts.
Yes.
Is that under one particular block of line items, like 400 or 500 or spread out over?
The biggest portion of that is in tab 18. That's the technology budget, 2018. And of course, those are, if we go to tab 18, and just talk, just to talk about the layout of the book, this is a good example. When I am done, every permanent employee, full-time employee will have their position in the book and their salary in the book. So you will see who makes up that account. Obviously, part-time people, crossing guards, those are part-time folks, they won't be in here, but all full-time employees will be in here. Now, as far as the projects for the technology department, if you look at the last two pages, at the bottom of page three, you'll see $225,000 for computer replenishment, 250 teacher computers at $900 apiece, plus a $5,000 upgrade to the high school phone system. Then on the next page, for network electronic equipment, that's the, like the Cisco system, routers and items like that, there's another $90,000. So those two items together total the $320,000. And again, John would have to explain exactly what those items are. You know, there's a quantity amount, an individual price for each quantity, and the buildings where the equipment is slated for. So that would be under TAB 2018. The upper items on this block are under TAB 23, those facility improvement projects. So under TAB 23, you'll see those projects. Now, the high school entrance is in two separate line items because of account coding. You have the estimated architectural cost of three thousand plus the estimated cost for the construction of the new entrance. So there's the thirty-three thousand dollars right there. I threw in a value of one hundred and twenty-five thousand for the gym floor replacement. I'm not sure what the final estimate will be, just looking at the preliminary information that we got from that first meeting. So obviously, that's a significant-sized project that will have to be bid. And once bid comes in, if we can get that bid before we get through the budget season, then we can book the actual dollar there. You can see the security gates are in there for this building, the bathroom partitions for Ruffsdale, and that Patterson pump item here at the middle school building. So that's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars worth of facility improvements. Plus those items I listed, the nine items that are not in this budget, I just listed them there for fun, in case you wanted to include them for next year or a future year. They're just in there. Again, it gets it out there. We're thinking about them, and those are items we can talk about at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. And then whatever other items that may come up. So yes, those costs are in the summer here, and I just pulled them out to the lower right so that, you know, they jump out at us. Because, you know, when you look at that deficit of a negative one million nine hundred thousand, you know, of that is five hundred and thirty-one thousand just for this stuff. So it's important to remember that. Whether you do it all or you do some portion of that for next year, you know, that's what we're gonna be discussing and considering, and how to finance that. Do we take it out of our accumulated fund balances, or do we use some leasing from a bank for the technology? Whatever. Again, that's to be talked about. But, you know, we wanted to get this stuff out there so that we don't forget about it, that we consider it. And if we, you know, if we can, you know, part of our job as a building steering committee is maybe lay out a capital improvement plan with timelines. So that we know down the road that, you know, in this particular year, we might be looking at boiler replacements or looking at, you know, roof jobs, whatever the case may be.
Thing is, we do have a good, solid fund balance, which we've talked about before. So it's not an issue of us looking at trying to accomplish some of these projects with no money at all. We do have a healthy fund balance, even based on current articles regarding fund balances for school districts. We are certainly in a very enviable position, I would say. So we have to protect it as much as we can, but again, that's what it's there for. That's what it was designed to do, to take care of some of these projects and to make sure that we keep current without falling so far behind that at some point in time we're unable to meet our needs.
Your point was well made. The longer you put these things off, the worse the situation becomes, and the expense of remedying the situation goes up.
All right. We still have no citizen's comments, so I guess we can go beyond that. Mike?
Just brought to my attention, so I just wanted to have a quick discussion. Next Thursday is Monday Thursday, and we just wanna make sure we're gonna have a forum, just still have a meeting, or if we should reschedule the meeting. Anybody have any feelings on that?
There's no feelings, you mean everybody's fine with next Thursday then?
I think we would reschedule.
Try Holy Thursday.
Maybe each meeting down a half week.
Mass is... We could go to mass before.
That's the last day of school next week, right?
Yes.
Thursday, yeah.
I'm finding it pretty special that somebody has somebody wants to...
If something of religious obligation on that evening, I might not be able to be here. The process would have to occur since we don't have a voting meeting between now and then. His president would call a special planning session for perhaps Monday or Wednesday.
Since we have three board members not here, how about if I contact those board members, ask them, and depending on how they feel, I can start asking for gates and then get back to these guys.
Sure. Yeah, then you would call up a special meeting, and it would have to be a voting meeting. And you would have to post it. And the only item on the voting agenda for that meeting would be to then cancel the planning session on Thursday.
Okay.
Call it.
Do you want to adjourn for executive session, Mike?
Just for one quick item.
Okay. Have a motion to adjourn for an executive session. We have one item to discuss.
Second.
Second by Jason and motion by Gail. You have unanimous here? All in favor?
Aye.